All right, we will bring the meeting to order for Tuesday, October 10th. And again, as we start out every meeting, we'll read the mission statement, which is, "The Norfolk Public Schools offers a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment that meets the needs of our diverse students. Through school, family, and community partnerships, we provide an education that inspires lifelong learners and cultivates caring and productive citizens of our ever-changing world." Roll call?
Jeff Chalmers.
Jeff Currie.
Mark Flaherty.
Thomas Doyle.
Ingrid Larney.
All right. First item we have here is for the donations. And hold on, let me find the accompanying. This is where I find the page on here that says this. Where's this? Am I not seeing this? I see five things, I don't see that one. All right, we have a non-donation, we're gonna go the old-school way. Norfolk PTO has generously donated $1,950 for Camp Bourndale. So do we have a motion to accept that very generous gift?
I make a motion that we accept the very generous gift.
Have a second?
I second.
Presuming no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, $1,950, very nice. All right, so then, let's see, moving on to my portion of the evening, I think we had decided, I think this came up last meeting, where we wanted to appoint, we need to finalize the legislative liaison position, which I think initially stemmed from a question that came up in June.
It was part of the reorganization, and last year Jeff Chalmers was our legislative liaison. Mark has expressed his interest, and the committee waited till we had a quorum to discuss it further.
Anyway, so we have a motion to then appoint Mark as the legislative liaison.
Can I make that motion?
No, someone else has to make it. Well, you probably could, but it's...
I'll make that motion.
Okay. We have a second?
Second.
Just before we vote, so just for discussion's sake, did you have, have you done anything with this previously? Has anything ever happened?
Yeah, it's a very slow process, as I warned, Mark. It essentially took me 12 phone calls, about eight emails, and a year and a half to two years to actually have my original meeting, which I had to go into Boston for.
Who'd you meet with, though?
Ross.
Oh, okay. Senator Ross, okay.
Sean and I had three or four different meetings, and then he'd gotten busy in Christmas time, and then we ended up after that just meeting, and I said, "Just, instead of having us meet on a monthly basis or a quarterly basis, just let me know anything that's updated and needs changes." Sure. And there was nothing out of the ordinary, so it really was no follow-up.
All right.
You are more than welcome, my friend.
All right, I don't have anything further on that, so anyone else have any further discussion or questions? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Accepting electronic signatures. Why am I not seeing this? Okay. Let's see. Da-da-da-da-da-da. Sorry, I'm not trying to make this dramatic, I just want to make sure I'm understanding what this is. Okay, so Todd Lindmark, the Finance Director for Norfolk, had relayed some information as far as regarding the acceptance of electronic signatures on the warrant, because I think this question came up last month, correct?
Yeah, it was asked if we could sign electronically, and Barbara said she would investigate it, but it's not consistent with the current town bylaws.
Yeah, so it's acceptable print, sign by hand, and then resubmit the signature page electronically. It is not, however, acceptable, at this point, to electronically sign the warrant. I think you might have asked the question last month, correct?
I asked. To me, it was easier before, when we, I've had it in the last, when I was originally signing warrants, I'd be out of town, and they needed someone, and I was like, "Can I sign it electronically?" Because I use that a lot. She was like, "Fine." So that's what I was doing.
Yeah, so I guess just for consistency's sake, we'll just have to do this. I mean, it's not a big, I mean, how I sign them all the time, I just sign it and then scan it in, and then that part's fine, just we can't do an electronic signature, so, just to clarify that point, so.
Yeah, just an observation, though, if someone can ask the town, if I'm reading this correctly, is the last time that policy updated, 1936?
It may be, Jeff. I'll have to double-check, I didn't even catch the date.
Does it say that? Yeah.
March 16th, 36. That could be a typo, I'll have to double-check that.
Come on, details, details.
If it is 1936, maybe we could ask for some reconsideration, potentially.
Let me check on that, and I will get back to you.
So the inkwell that was used to sign, and the big feather thing?
As a reminder to them that I around...
I would imagine, quite honestly, even if that's a typo, it's definitely not a current bylaw that's been revisited recently.
Right.
Even if it was 1996, it's still...
The IRS accepts electronic signatures.
Right.
So...
They can find the tax returns that way, they have no problem with it.
Feeny and Freddie that I work with nationally, they accept them, so it's crazy ideas.
All right, then moving on to the superintendent evaluation that we had worked on. I don't recall, do we have to go, like, every single thing? The document itself gets posted, correct?
The document itself is a public record and available for the public.
Right, okay.
But just to review the highlights.
All right, so I'll just kind of go through the highlights real quick, because I know everyone enjoys listening to the sound of my voice. The first thing is a breakdown of the various goals that Ingrid had. Let's see, professional practice was to strengthen the district's recruiting program and practices for hiring of new employees. District improvement was to revise and update district report cards for all grade levels, and then sort of change that process. We'd actually gotten an update on that, I believe, last meeting. Third one was develop a comprehensive new three-year strategic plan for the schools that establishes clear goals and action plans for improvement based on data analysis and feedback. And then the fourth was to continue to close the achievement gap between special education students and general population, specifically in the area of mathematics, as measured by the increase in percentage of special education students on the MCAS. And we're looking for 2.5 percent. So, as I have voiced repeatedly, this form itself drives me nuts. I just don't, I don't like how it's set up, but it's the form we have to work with, so that's it. So some of these, as you guys are looking at this, some of this is either, like, you did or you didn't type thing. Like, for example, let's go to the report card. As was described last month, I think it was last month you gave the update on this, is that correct? So we're basically three-quarters of the way through the process with that, so that's why that's left a significant process, just by the nature of how it developed. It wasn't something that could be fully implemented as of now, September. So it started sort of going in its phases, and we got the update on that, so that's fine. I mean, we know that's...
And the goals, too, as they were proposed last year, are all two-year goals.
Right.
So we're only at the midway point and halfway through.
Right, and so then, just so everybody knows that's, that may be watching at home, the five options you could get as far as scoring are, "Did not meet, some progress, significant process, met, or exceeded." So, for example, that one particular goal exceeded, I don't even know how you necessarily would get an exceeded, unless you did a two-year goal within one year, but even then, I don't know, it just, the category doesn't quite apply. So most of these, as you see there, like, it's sort of the strategic plan, it works, so that's met, that's happening. And then, last time, we haven't, we'll do for an update as far as the MCAS results shortly, possibly November, right?
Yeah, the date is later in getting them out, because they had the new MCAS 2.0 registration, so...
2.0, okay. So do we have a sense of when that's gonna?
I would say November, but...
So we may not know till December meeting as far, so we don't know how that stands, so we have sort of a sense, so again, that's why you see significant progress there, because we're kind of forced to go for that. So then bringing out further, we've got instructional leadership. As far, as I just noted, we just discussed the report card portion. We got a lot of the changes that we all seem to agree were very good, the parents seem to feel they were good results. MCAS people are satisfied with. The next category is management operations. And this is an area that I thought that, as far as the feedback we got, this is an area that I thought Ingrid stood out very well, particularly in terms of it's a challenging budget year, as it seems to be every single year. But just within this year, we had the contract negotiation with the teachers, we had to give back some money to the town in the spring that we may or may not be able to get back. And then just the level of communication that exists between all the various departments and so on. So we, we have a nice relationship with the Teachers Association, we have a nice relationship with the various town departments, and that's why it's kind of worked to our benefit. So that was an area we thought she really stood out, and then your scores you can get within that category, unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient, or exemplary. And that's, we scored that last one exemplary. Family and community engagements, we went over the results of the study, the parent survey, excuse me, last spring. So, and as we've discussed ad nauseam here, as far as the level of communication constantly needs to be a focus as far as from the community, and not just to the community, but to the, again, continuing with the teachers, to the student, anyone who's, anyone and everyone, I guess. So to my mind, well, you see, you see a score of proficient end up being the result here, that's sort of like a continuing thing. I don't, I almost think philosophically, you can't be exemplary there, because it's an ongoing thing. So it's not to say that the level of communication is not good, it's always something that can continue to be revised and approved upon. So that's just my thought as far as what that was. So that, just to be clear, so that's not an indication, like, the first category I read was all, that was outstanding, there's no improvement there. This is more of a sort of a, an ongoing thing itself, so I think it's, it has a different grading, but you still have to apply the same grading scale to it, if that makes sense. And again, it is sort of my obsession, too, as far as how important I think that is, because I think that, that drives the whole thing. I mean, the level of communication, I think, is the whole key. Professional culture, exemplary. I think the overall culture is fantastic within all the parties. Basically, one of the points we put in here that is in large part is due to the outstanding level of trust that exists between the district and the staff. Going back to contract negotiations, we were able to have a frank exchange of ideas throughout the process, and it was, it couldn't have been more professional, it couldn't have been more, it couldn't have been a more open process, and that could not have happened had that culture not been established ahead of time. And then lastly, overall, is the overall performance, which we rated overall as exemplary, and noted those various things. Said the level of communication, keep working on that, the district's professional culture, academic achievements, the buildings themselves, pretty much everything you can imagine. So that's kind of the overall high-level view of what the review itself was. So I don't know if anyone has any questions or things they want to add, and then Ingrid, whatever she wishes to add, or...
Just looking at the instructional leadership, there's no marking on there.
That may not have come through anything.
We had some issues with the form.
Yeah, the form, I had warned her it wasn't working. That is actually supposed to be, hold on.
I noticed the issue.
Yes, thank you.
But I also noticed that there was nothing marked off on that one.
These are good ones. To my memory, I think that was exemplary as well. Yeah, because you see, if you see the X kind of end up getting screwed up in the box here, and then it ended up next to the proficient, it was not working form-wise, so I don't know why it didn't appear in there, because it wasn't initially on the one, I thought it was on the one I'd sent in, but I remember reading it as I was looking through the ones that were submitted to me. So yes, that's what it's supposed to be, thank you for pointing that out, though.
I will have the tech team take a look at the eval for why you can't check the boxes and stuff.
I don't know if you could see the same thing, I couldn't get it to open it for life.
I had trouble with a similar form, so I'll see what they can do.
And it wasn't protected, so I just couldn't get it to be done, so. I don't know if anyone else has any other further comments, or...
Excellent.
Yeah. Very well done.
So yeah, overall job extremely well done, so thank you very much.
Oh, I haven't just had to sign the original.
Let me cover my pen, fill that in, so that's Mark's thing. Okay, so there's a...
Can I make it?
I will. I'll have a little bit of water.
Yes.
Give you a pen back, thank you. We had on here, as far as something that was on the discussion point, was use of undirected donations. This is a question Paul had raised. He's not here, so I'd almost rather push this off, if everybody's okay with that, just because, I don't know what, if he had specific thoughts, I don't want to misrepresent what his thoughts may have been. And then the final thing I had was a vote of a delegate to the annual business meeting for MASC. Had you done this?
Every year.
You would have been the person for this the last few years, right?
Last five.
Are you able to attend for that? You are? Okay.
I should be there. I, maybe speaking in Chicago, I'll find out in two weeks.
Okay, so we might want to do an alternate, just in case. It's the, at the conference, November 1st, 3:15, Wednesday, is the vote for the delegates.
All right, so why don't we do, well, we'll work on the assumption that Jeff can go, so we'll, please need a nomination or a motion for him to be that, and then a second for that.
I'll make a motion to approve Jeff as the delegate.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Would anyone be able to go if we do require a second person? I cannot.
I can't do it that big.
I don't think I can either.
Well, hopefully you don't go to Chicago, so.
Thanks a lot.
I'll nominate Paul.
Second.
Oh, my God.
That'll teach him. I guess if something comes up, we'll figure, we'll play something together, so...
I'll let you know in the next couple of weeks.
That's, you said it was in November, right?
November 1st.
November 1st, and then you'll find out in mid, so two weeks before, roughly? Okay, well, hopefully I can go. Okay, that's all I had.
All right, so I have a couple of things for tonight. The first is, we started last year a process of developing a joint Special Education Steering Committee with the three elementary districts in King Philip as a result of the Walker Audit. We've had several meetings, and I just wanted to update you on where we were. So we've had, we've met three times with an outside facilitator, who you read her resume, Dorsey Yearley, she was a special ed director for many years in Wellesley. And what we have done, we started by having each district do their own strengths/weakness analysis, and then we shared that data, and we identified areas that were common interests and needs, and areas that we needed to kind of strengthen and improve. We've selected two goals to focus on as a joint committee. The first is looking at our programming for students with social-emotional learning needs, and the continuity of programming across the three elementary districts, and as kids proceed vertically through their educational career at the middle school and high school. The second was around communication, and helping the districts to better understand what the resources and programs of each district were, and helping parents better understand the transition process from the elementary into the middle school. So we've chosen those areas of focus, we've started some initial brainstorming of action steps, but we'll be meeting again October 24th with a consultant to start to develop a concrete strategic plan. And I will be bringing that back to you. We're expecting by December to have a strategic plan outlined for those two shared goals. So it's been a very positive process. As we've talked about in the past, it's been long overdue, and we're really striving to have a better continuity of programming from pre-K to 22. I think there's good partnership, and there's good investment of everybody on the committee at this point, some group. Any questions on that? Okay. The next thing is just another update on the elementary report cards. So again, we had as a goal, this was a two-year goal, to revise and refine all of the elementary report cards. We were expecting to roll the new report cards out next September, but we're actually ahead of the game, so we are rolling out the first half for students in K to 3 this year. They're standards-based report cards, so the biggest difference in the past, and I put in your packet a copy of our old report cards, so you could see how they differ from the new report cards. But basically, in the older report cards, you've got overall global grades for reading, so reading comprehension, writing, and the, they were graded on a scale of excellent, very good, satisfactory, needs improvement. The standards-based report cards are much more detailed and specific, so it takes reading comprehension, and it breaks it down to the specific skills under that domain that students are supposed to master by the end of the grade level. The standards are based on the mass curriculum frameworks. Under ELA, there's probably 50 standards, so we're not reporting out on every standard. What grade level teams really put a lot of thought and time into last year was working with the curriculum committees, going through the standards and identifying what they thought were eight to 10 power standards, core understandings that kids absolutely have to master by the end of the grade level in order to be successful the following year of school. Those are the standards we're reporting out on. They are all end-of-year standards, so the expectation in the first marking period is that many kids are going to be emerging in their understanding. It's new content, but parents should be able to track over the four terms the development of each of those skills. We also had a lot of community input, and one of the things that parents were really interested in that were, I would say, lacking on our old report cards, is a more detailed understanding of their students' social-emotional development and their work study habits. So you'll see on the new report cards, we have a fairly significant section on learner qualities, and these came from the CASL, Social Emotional Learning Standards, and they're identified by grade level. So these are core learner qualities. We also included teacher comments, which were not on the old report cards. That was something else that parents were looking for. The new report cards are all electronic, they work with our current student information system, so attendance and all of that data is automatically populated. We have a training scheduled October 16th for all the teachers piloting, to teach people how to enter their grades and how to manage the new report cards. We will be sending them home in print copy for this year. Because it's a new process, we want to make sure that everybody's able to access everything. We do have the capacity in the future to send them electronically, and parents can log in and view the report cards. So that's something we could look at down the road, but for this year, they'll come home in paper copy. Other things, I have a parent workshop scheduled for November, Wednesday, November 15th. I included in your packet a copy of the PowerPoint, just to explain to parents what standards-based report cards are, to talk a little bit about the new reporting scale, so instead of excellent, very good, needs improvement, we're using a 4-3-2-1, and each level of the rubric has a very clearly defined criteria. So we'll be transitioning to that, I'll explain that at the parent information night. We also, at the end of this pilot year, will collect feedback from staff and from parents as well, and make any modifications that we think need to be made prior to the rollout of 4, 5, and 6 next year. Okay? It'll be a bigger transition for 4, 5, and 6, because in grades 4 and 5 currently, they give letter grades. We will no longer be giving letter grades in grades 4 and 5, they'll be standards-based grades. We're retaining letter grades in grade 6 only, and the reason for that is that it's going to be a hybrid report card, kids will get an overall grade and standards, grades on the standards as well. And it's because several of our students and families apply to private schools after grade 6, and some of the private schools are still looking for that. So the 6th grade report card's a hybrid. Okay? But all of the report cards are done, we actually have 4, 5, and 6 complete, we're just gonna, we're gonna pilot with the grades where it's a more incremental change, work out the kings, and then we'll roll the new ones out next year. Any questions on that? I also, over the summer, and I think I included in your packet, based on working with the report card committee, we brainstormed questions parents might have, and put together a parent's guide to standards-based report cards. This is, was given out at open houses to parents in all the grades that are piloting, and we also have it available online, but I'll give it out at the parent open house as well. Questions on that?
None for me. Does it? Thank you.
Okay. We have fundraiser approvals. This is something you do per policy annually, so both building principals have submitted what they anticipate for fundraisers for this year. The Freeman, they're really pretty similar to what you've approved in the past. For Freeman Kennedy School, they do some fundraising activities for the 6th grade promotion. They gave examples, like the grade 5 and 6 dance, they did a Pizzeria Uno fundraiser, where if you ate that night and you gave a coupon, an amount of the proceeds went to the school. They did a Red Sox promotion. And then for all Freeman Kennedy students, they do a Santa Foundation drive to support local families during the holidays. They do two fundraisers to offset the cost of Camp Bourndale, and they'll bring more information as they finalize what those will be. We do a Read Across America and a Jump For Heart. At the H-Law Day, there's, again, this list is similar to last year, they do a food drive for Norfolk Food Pantry around Thanksgiving. They do a holiday caring and sharing fundraiser around the holidays in a Hatton Mittens tree. They do another food drive around the 100th day of school. There's a Read Across America basket raffle that they do in partnership with NTA. They do a Rally Against Cancer opening day of Fenway Park, and they do the Jump Rope For Heart in May as well. And they may are considering an additional fundraiser to raise funds for victims of recent hurricanes. They haven't determined a date and timeline on that. Freeman did something recently. Any questions on fundraisers?
Can I just see that real quick?
Yes.
No, I'm just always curious about the timing, as far as how spread out they are. February...
They tried to pace things so that people aren't all hit at once. The holiday ones are...
They don't spot...
February, March, April, May. Okay. This is nothing in January that's scheduled at this point, and then the food pantry one, starting next month is the first one, correct?
Yep.
Yeah, I like the fact it ends in May. I don't, I don't think putting one into June, I think people start to mentally leave the place, so I don't know.
And they're busy.
Yeah, that gets to be a little too much, so.
So we need a vote on that one.
All right, so we have a vote. All right, a motion to accept the fundraiser schedule is proposed.
I make a motion that we approve the fundraisers as proposed.
We have a second?
Okay.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye.
I'd just like to make a note, there's not a list that says...
I just saw that.
On there?
Yep.
Oh, should we revote then, next month?
Um, yeah.
Well, it does say fundraisers approvals, so it's right there.
Yeah, but it doesn't actually say vote, so from a technical standpoint.
Yeah, we should probably revote.
Well, we'll have to revote next month.
I'm just looking to see if any of them would be prior to that.
The only one is the...
Thanksgiving is the first one.
Thanksgiving, but that's okay, we still have time.
So we'll have to revote in November.
Okay.
You're two-for-two tonight, you're on fire.
And policy meeting today.
It's your best meeting yet, you should go home.
The last thing I had was, it's also in your packet, we have an extra unused basketball hoop that was ordered when they built the Freeman Kennedy. So it's an overstock item, we don't have anywhere to put it up, and it's too big to bring down to H-Law Day. It's not an adjustable, down to the lower level.
Is it inside one or outside one?
It's an outside basketball court. So our facilities director is requesting permission, because the estimated value may be up to $500, to donate the hoop to the town. They'd like to put it up in the back of town hall for town employees. It's been in storage for six years.
So...
Will there be a...
That's actually...
We don't have anywhere that we can put it or use it.
Will there be a game scheduled?
I don't know, they're, they're trying to put it in a place where people could, the police, the fire, other people could use it.
I'm just trying to think, I wonder if you can get, I mean, it's a perfectly fine idea, I have no issues with that, but I wonder if there'd be, you could do a community raffle to raise monies for whatever.
You could certainly consider it.
I don't know how much interest there would be, and I mean, it has this...
It's the same as what we've got out on the outside playground.
Are you looking to have something thrown on your lawn, or? No, I'm just trying to think, is there, I mean, I don't know if there'd be more trouble that's worth, I mean, most people already have ones, so, yeah, that may fall in the more trouble that's worth category, okay. I retract that, that didn't happen.
Rewind and delete.
Can we, we take that piece off, maybe?
And he's nodding yes. He's got a cold, just all right, he's got a cold.
I think that there's a sense that it may be used if they had something there.
Yeah, that's fine, they have a summer thing going on there, so that's fine. All right. So that silly suggestion aside, we'll now move on to the vote. So do we have a motion to donate the basketball hoop as suggested?
I make a motion that we donate the basketball hoop.
Second?
I'll second.[1701.12]
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Oh yeah, aye, definitely aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just say motion as submitted, you'd be good.
All right. So move on to committee reports. King Philip?
Woo-hoo. We've got the, I think, two, one of two things. One thing we talked about in detail had to do with the search committee. We had two presentations that were given, one by NESDAQ, another one by MS, MASC. We made a recommendation to go towards MASC, which we'll have further information on. Glenn Kuchar was one of the two who actually made the presentation. Art Betancourt was from NESDAQ. They were both very professional, did a great job in the presentation, but just felt that MASCs, MASCs was a little bit stronger and we felt there was a history there with MASC that was stronger versus the other company.
Jeff, did they decide whether they're seeking an interim or a permanent position?
It's still in discussion.
Okay.
It was definitely a recommendation based on discussions, but it is, still is not something that's been determined. We have two options with the, the search, one of which is to have them assist us with this from a consulting standpoint or to do an independent where we would do it and they would assist. We still are deciding which one we want to take. One is more expensive than the other, obviously. But one of the recommendations was made by myself and a couple of members is if we decided to take some of that on ourselves, it would be a little insane considering the amount of time it takes to do it. So it would probably be in our best interest to do a consultation or a consultant. That hasn't still be, that hasn't been completed nor has it been decided.
What would their role be?
In which capacity?
MAS, MASC, what would they specifically be doing? I know you haven't decided, but I mean, what is some of the thought of what they would do?
Their capacity essentially would be to find from a local, regional, state, and national standpoint. MASC obviously has a better foothold and footprint in the region than the other company. The other company's more New England based, whereas MASC has a footprint already in the region. So they do, do everything from trying to find the information, outlining exactly what information they need in accordance with us, with what we'd be looking for. They would basically narrow the list and we would make the, be the ones making the decision.
And they often will run focus groups to the community, gather data of what you're looking for. They will screen and vet references before they bring forward candidates. They often will do your brochure for you and advertise and.
What the benefit was.
They do a lot of searches.
They, the data that they provided as far as we're concerned was much more successful than the other company. And again, with the footprint that they have, it really was a powerful decision. But in consideration of cost, you had NESDAQ, which was more of a à la carte versus MASCs was, everything was included. Including what Ingrid had just mentioned, so.
Yeah, so now we did a search for you, or not you specifically at that point, but I can't even remember what we had as far as assistance. I know somebody put out the initial information. We did a lot of it on our own.
You did your own internal search.
I know we sorted through about 100, or I don't even know what the number was. It was a lot of, because I remember taking home a stack of them, we all were assigned to go through them and stuff. And it was, it was a long, it was a lot of work.
Oh, sure was.
It's a lot of work, and I think that MasC has some strong recruiting power, so that might help you build your candidate pool.
Absolutely, absolutely. I mean, part of the, the only reservation we had was MASC was the company that did the last search. And there's, so obviously there were some concerns there, but I don't necessarily think that, that should even be something considered. I mean, they made the initial, they did what was necessary. I think they did a proficient job. After that, it's a, it's a matter of.
Yeah, I mean, they don't ultimately make a hiring decision or.
You can't tell the future.
After the fact, yeah.
You don't know, I mean, you can only determine certain things.
Yeah. So, okay.
The other thing that we had a discussion about had to do with, let's see. Community working group. There are three different things that they are involved with, community relations, budget, and strategic group, or strategic plan. And according to Dr. Zalinski, they were having success over the last two weeks with these meetings as well as the information that comes out of it. So hopefully these will be supportive with us when it comes getting more involved in the budget. I understand there's a very successful and, and very detailed Norfolk group that was, that was created last fall. And I think it's much stronger than the other two towns. What the interesting dialogue I had last year when we had this meeting at one of the KP meetings, when we had about 50 different parents, is Norfolk was the only one that had created a group on Facebook. And the question that came from the other two towns was, well, why weren't we included? And it was kind of like, well, they are doing it for the town.
I know Plainville had one. By last spring, Plainville had one.
Right, but as of the meeting. The discussions between, and I, I went out into the audience and had distinct discussions with a couple of, I probably about a dozen different people from three different towns. And the responses I got from people in Plainville as well as Rentham were, you know, we don't know why we weren't included in that. And it was, well, these, Norfolk created their own. We didn't have any part of it. And then the recommendation was if you wanted to create these, I'd be happy to show you how to create the groups, so.
Yes, I know that came up during, on the various Facebook, the site for it. That question came up, like, why doesn't Rentham or why isn't Plainville, and this was Plainville and Rentham residents asking this. And essentially that was the answer, like, oh, we formed our own because we're.
Nobody spearheaded.
I mean, this is our tax dollars in Norfolk wise, so you guys, you know, do your own and then we'll kind of jointly get together. So I don't know. And then it's been fairly quiet. Once the budget went through in, what, ultimately June or whatever the case was, I haven't really heard too much. There's been a couple of attempts to do stuff, but it's been fairly quiet.
They have been involved in individual separate groups.
That's good.
And it's been progressive.
That's probably better than having a Facebook discussion anyway, so.
Absolutely. So, no, look forward to more dialogue with them as to, you know, recommendations they make and getting them involved in groups that would be productive to both budget as well as community relations. So look forward to, you know, how it's going to work out.
Okay. Is that it for King Philip? All right, moving on to policy.
For policy, we have two, two third readings. One for access to digital resources and the other for empowered digital use. Nothing changed since the third or second reading.
Makes it easy. All right, so then we need separate motions to accept access to digital resources and then empower digital use. We need two separate motions and two separate votes.
I make a motion that we approve access to digital resources.
A second on that?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye.
I make a motion that we approve empowered digital use.
Second on that?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Then we have three incidental changes. The first one is administering medicine to students. You'll notice the, all of the changes are listed in blue on your copy, if you have a digital copy. I don't know if the black way, print was.
The change to the administration of medication was, was it had said that the building nurse could designate the secretary to administer pre-measured medications to students? And the nurses asked that we add or designate, because when teachers go on field trips, they are the ones that would administer medication, scheduled medication. But it is all pre-measured according to the policy and labeled.
Okay, so do we have a motion to accept that?
I make a motion that we approve the incidental change on administering medication to students.
Second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We have another incidental change for advisory committees to the school committee. Here's, all, again, all the changes are in blue. It's just, it's really just a lot of rewording and putting something in compliance with MasC recommended policies based on the way the law is written.
So over the summer, MASC went through their entire, entire model policy manual and updated every single policy. So we're taking as a policy subcommittee, taking it section by section. And so you're probably going to see a lot of policies coming forward with incidental language changes based on changes to the law.
Okay. And this is regarding BDE?
Yeah, for all of them, they did the entire policy manual. So right now, the policy subcommittee is just looking at the section B, the section B.
I just want to clarify relative to language, it's not advisory, it's subcommittees?
It's, that's the advisory committees.
This one is BDF.
This is BDF.
Okay, all right.
There's two, advisory committees to the school committee and then subcommittees.
So did they add number nine, the advisory committees can read on this policy, subject provisions of the meeting law? That's a, that's a recent addition, right? Okay, that makes sense. So this is mostly just wordsmithing, the other two changes above, correct? Okay. All right, do we have a motion to accept this?
I make a motion that we approve the advisory committees to the school committee policy.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next one is subcommittees of the school committee. Again, it's wordsmithing and then kind of combining number five and number six into one.
Okay, do we have a motion to accept this one?
I make a motion that we approve the policy on subcommittees of the school committee.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And next month, we're going to be bringing forward three new, three policies, again, incidental changes.
Is this the same thing as a result of their overall review?
Yeah, pretty much. So we already discussed everything, it's just minor, minute wordsmithing, changing a couple of things here and there.
Huh?
But we'll have those for you next month.
All right, so let's see, moving on, so we have a partner review, renewal, excuse me, for the Special Education Parent Advisory Council, CPAC. So we need a motion to review, to approve them for renewal.
I make a motion that we approve the review of the Special Education Advisory Council.
Do we have a second on that one?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Then we're moving on to approving the minutes from our last meeting. I believe we were all here, right? Yeah.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes as.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. No further discussion, I'm assuming, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we are looking at Tuesday, the 14th of November for our next meeting. We'll also approve that cricket. That's right, we can't vote on that. Uh, sounds good. 14th of November. Yeah, I'm good at that, all right. You said that worked for you, Jeff Curry?
Yes.
I'm just getting this to my phone real quick, they're with me. All right, we, if you've got anything else, we adjourned.